I would like to introduce you to Patricia Geismann and tell you a little bit about her, and then we'll hear more from Pat. Pat is Medina County's first female commissioner elected in 1992. She is the longest-serving commissioner in Medina County history, 24 years, and also the longest-serving female commissioner in the state of Ohio. Commissioner Geismann is past president of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, as well as past president of the Ohio County Risk Sharing Authority, an insurance pool for Ohio County residents that are self-insured. Geismann's long history of projects she has been instrumental in establishing include the Medina County Battered Women's Shelter, the Juvenile Detention Center, the Medina County Jail, a senior farm market program, the farmers market on the Medina Square, and an economic development program, just to name a few. Initiatives also include the Medina County Railroad Safety Task Force, which has improved 28 railroad crossings in Medina County with lights and gates without using any local tax dollars. The Medina County Foreclosure Prevention Task Force helped many families work with the mortgage companies to save their homes or get out from under the loan without ruining their credit. The Medina County Food Pantry Task Force, today known as Feeding Medina County, provides free food for needy children and seniors. In 2000, Pat organized and introduced the Medina County Commissioners Charity Ball to the community that has raised more than $350,000 for local charities over the past 17 years. Throughout the years, Pat has focused on quality of life issues facing residents using a conservative and common sense approach. So Patricia Geismann, or Pat, I'd like to welcome you here today, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
And it sounds like you've been very busy over the years.
Absolutely.
Yes. Well, let's start by talking about the position of county commissioner. For the viewers at home, can you tell them a little bit about what the county commissioner does and what the role is?
Sure. It's one of the most common questions we get because people do not understand what the commissioners do, since there are local, like your councils in your cities and townships. But the county commissioners are overseeing a huge budget, and we appropriate funds to all the departments that the county has, like your highway department, your sanitary engineer department, job and family services, which is the old welfare program. And that is our major job. Also, the Ohio revised code requires us to maintain all of our buildings. And right now, we're in need of getting the courthouse renovated, but until funds are available, we're not going to be able to do that. But those are some of the things, and the most important priority, giving budgets, spending that tax dollar wisely for our residents.
Okay. Thank you. And we talked about your bio a bit, but why don't you tell us about your background and how it pertains to why you're running? And I know you've been in the position for years, and it sounds like you'd like to continue. Tell us about why you want to continue to pursue this.
Well, this is my 24th year, and I never started out to be a commissioner for 24 years, I can tell you that. But I do love what I do, and I know that I'm making a difference. And when you know you're making a difference, it just gives you the ambition to do more. And I'm not afraid to take an initiative. I'm out all the time at the different programs in the community, whether it's county programs, a charity program, whatever. I'm out all the time, and what I do is listen. And when you're listening to people, you get all kinds of ideas as to what you can do to resolve some of the issues that people may have. And that is how I took the initiatives for Feeding Medina County and the Foreclosure Prevention Task Force. Because back in 2009, we were in a terrible financial crunch. We laid off about 45 employees. And what I soon discovered, that there was a lot of homes that certainly appeared to be foreclosed. And on my way home from Inkley one day, I saw this house that was just completely overgrown, and I knew as a former realtor what the problem was. And so I went back and I called the clerk of courts, and "How many foreclosures have we had this year?" And it was a large number.
I remember.
So I thought, "I can do something about that." And I called some of the movers and shakers of our community. And that's what you have to do if you want to do something successfully. Get busy people and people that you know have been successful in what they do. And we got together and we determined what we could do. We developed a webpage. The county auditor was on the committee. He dedicated a couple employees to do the paperwork that needed to be sent in to the banks. And we had a very successful program going on. And after about six months then, I saw something else. Not only were people having trouble paying their mortgage or getting out from under bad credit, but they also were having trouble putting food on the table. And someone made a comment to me that we had children going to bed hungry in Medina County, and I said, "No, we don't." "Oh, yes, we do." So I knew I could do something about that, too. And I got a group of people together, but I had a difficult time convincing some of these key people that I wanted to work with that we had a food problem in Medina County. Their reaction was just like my reaction, because Medina County throughout the state is known as a well-to-do county.
Right, it's not an issue you picture happening here.
No, no. And so I first had to convince about a dozen people to serve on the committee. And then, "Okay, what do we need to do?" And we already had about 16 food pantries, but what we discovered was they were having trouble getting the food to their pantries from the Akron-Canton Regional Food Bank. So we thought, "Okay, we need a truck." And so Bill France, who was with Sandwich Food Corporation, was on my committee, and he knew all about trucks. He did a lot of work in looking at good-use trucks. We raised the money, and by 2010, we had a good-use truck and started to bring things from the Akron-Canton Regional Food Bank down to our pantries. I believe today we have 21 pantries. But we also have a program now called Feeding Medina County. Because it's spread out a lot more than just simply bringing food back to Medina County.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm familiar with it, yeah.
So we have programs now. There's programs in the schools where the kids will take a weekend of food home, and we have a program for seniors where once a month, they get a big bag of groceries, including meat now. So, and then we also have once a month at the fairgrounds where any family can come in. And it's just amazing to me how many people we continue to feed in Medina County. And we will continue to do that as long as there is no need for it any longer. So we're in for a long haul, I think.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, I'm familiar with the program, and it's a good program.
It is.
It's interesting to hear the background as to how it became established. What's the biggest cost area for the county budget, and how do you propose that we manage it?
Well, the biggest cost would probably be considered our safety forces, which includes the courts, too. And it has always been a problem to provide enough funding to give the sheriff everything he wants, or the judges. But the judges can make us, they can file a court order and make us pay them what they need to have in their budget, what they need. But that is the most difficult thing, is safety forces. I can remember back when Neil Hassinger was sheriff, I would ask him at the end of his presentation, because they always give us much more than we can afford to pay in requests. And I'd always say, "Neil, what is the one thing that you want? What is your priority?"
Right.
And he would say what his priority was.
Make sure you had the money for that.
And then I convinced the other two commissioners that that is what we need to do, make sure that that's in there.
Yeah.
And, but it is, it is one of the highest expenses that we have.
At the county level, okay. What are your views on government procurement, and where do you believe that we can improve on that? Are there regional solutions that can help reduce expenses at the county level?
Well, I think anytime that you can work with another government entity, that you need to do that if you can save money. And getting grants, all the grants that you can get to take care of some of the issues that you just don't have the funds in your budget for.
Right.
And I think the commissioners have been very much aware of that over the years, and have been very successful at bringing funds back in. And just like the Railroad Safety Task Force.
I was thinking of that example when you mentioned it.
Yes, I have brought in more than $5 million in state and federal funding, no local taxes on those 28 crossings where we put lights and gates up.
Right, these are the ones that just had like a sign initially, right?
Yes.
But no, nothing to stop people.
Yes.
Right.
But if you look around, like you can find the foundations that will help you.
Yeah.
And of course, ODOT was absolutely wonderful when I contacted them for help. In fact, it's such an easy thing to do, I was surprised more counties, more commissioners didn't get involved in doing this. What I didn't know when I started the Railroad Safety Task Force was the very year that I started it, we had more vehicle train accidents than any other county in the state of Ohio. And I found that out at the end of the year, and I thought, "Well, I guess I'm on the right track."
Yeah, no pun intended.
Yeah, to make sure that we get the safety measures there.
Right.
And we have, we put light and gates at many crossings, some of them required only lights or only gates. And it has been quite interesting. I've had a wonderful committee that have stayed with me the whole time, and we organized in 2002. But it took a year, almost two years. We had to go to all 106 crossings we have in Medina County and take pictures.
And try and prioritize.
And try to prioritize, you know, evaluate which ones were the most dangerous. And it was easy at first, because some of them really did stand out.
Yeah.
We're now at the point where all of the most dangerous have been taken care of. But we still have some that we're still getting funding from ODOT. In fact, Angels on Track was very helpful in the beginning to help us fund these improvements. And also, an organization in Pennsylvania, the Railroad, the Northern Ohio, the Northern American Railroad Foundation.
Yeah.
And so we've been very successful at getting those funds. You have to ask for them, and I'm going to get them if you don't ask.
Yeah, they're not going to just fall into the sky.
But what's the worst they can do is say no to you.
Right. It's worth trying out, for sure.
Yeah, that's been a great program.
Excellent. Let's talk about recycling for a minute. I know that we've had, it's been a topic in the news here in Medina County, and what direction we'll be going long-term, and I know the old way has kind of changed and evolved. What are your thoughts going forward? Where do you think the whole recycling program should be going in the future?
All I hear from residents is, "Do what you used to do with our recyclables. Put them in one bag, pick them up, and take them somewhere, and recycle, because we don't want to recycle." Now, not everyone's that way, but that is the biggest complaint I get about our recycling.
Yeah.
And you may know, I did not vote to not take a contract. I felt the commissioners really did a disservice to the community in not accepting a contract, even for a short period of time, because there was no plan.
Right.
It's just, "All right, we're not going to accept this contract."
Right.
And the program we had before had been very good for over 20 years. We had people from all over the world coming here and looking at our facility. In fact, it won the SWAN award about five years after it had opened, and that's the number-one facility in North America. So it was really a wonderful program. There was a commissioner that just really felt that we weren't recycling enough. Well, in the contract, the company was not able to save trash from one day to the next. So there were some days when there was a lot of trash left over that did go to the landfills.
Okay.
And that's why it appeared as though the recyclables weren't as high as they should be. But I remember at one time, the sanitary engineer told me we were almost up to 40% recycling. Now, that included all of the mulch and, you know, all of the side projects. And, but if you get down just to recyclables of aluminum, or paper, or plastic, the numbers weren't that great. But today, we're only at 3%.
Right.
So I don't know what we're going to do for sure. I do know that it is something that needs to be addressed, something that needs to be taken care of as quickly as possible. I was talking to the county administrator not long ago, and I said, "Well, I guess we'll have a new commissioner help making this decision." And he says, "No, I'd like to see this resolved before the end of the year."
Right. Do you think we could ever get back to the customers putting it in a single bag, but recycling a much higher percent? Or do you think it'll be a different system in the future?
You know, I'm not certain. That is what the community wants, but I'm not certain that that will be the recommendation of the committee that oversees this.
Right. Okay. Is there anything else that you'd like to tell us that we didn't have a chance to cover during the interview? Any other things about yourself or the commissioner position?
Well, I guess one of the things that we really need to do in Medina County is renovate our courthouse, and we don't have the funds to do that. And one of the reasons we don't have the funds is we are stuck with the guarantee on the fiber optic ring, and there's been things in the paper about that. I did not vote for it. I was very concerned. Butler County had gotten stuck with having to pay off theirs, and I also believe that we should not compete with private industry. But anyhow, I did look at it as a good tool for economic development.
Right.
In fact, I had been on that committee for 10 years, and I thought it was a wonderful tool, and certainly something that hopefully would make a difference in retaining and bringing in new economic development.
Businesses.
But I did not vote for it, because I felt we should not be responsible, because it's $1.2 million. And for the last four or five years, we've had help maybe from Brunswick, Wadsworth, Westfield. And now, all of those, their contracts for the five years are up, and we're stuck now with this whole $1.2 million. In order to go forward with renovating the courthouse, we need $1.4 million. And I am sure we could have come up with a difference, but we don't have those funds now.
Right, okay.
So what the commissioners have to do, and especially me, in fact, I've already met with Dave Carrato, who oversees the fiber optic ring. I have got to now do everything I can to make that successful, so that we can get out from it.
So that, so it's funded in that you can...
So I've told him, "Call on me to do whatever. If you need someone to make a phone call to get you in the door," because when a commissioner calls the businesses, they take the phone calls always. And he said, "If you need that, I'll do that. Whatever it takes, let's get the ball rolling, and let's get this thing so that it pays for itself."
Right, so it's self-funding, right.
So commissioners are really going to have to work on that.
Okay.
And it's, you know, even though I didn't vote for it, it's got to be successful now, because two did.
Right.
And so you have to go along with the majority and do the best you can.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for the information. And Pat Geismann, on behalf of the Medina Chamber, I want to thank you for coming out today and wish you luck in the coming election.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mark Colzar has been a Medina City Councilman since 2004. Mark serves as chairman of the Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee. He is also on the city's Finance Committee, Water and Utilities Committee, and Medina County Planning Commission. Mark has lived in Medina County for over 33 years. Mark has married to his beautiful wife, Megan. He's a proud uncle and a family of rescued animals. He is employed as a sales representative with Conviber in Medina. Mark also spent 10 years of his life in real estate finance. Mark graduated from Medina High School in 1991 and studied at the University of Akron in Business and General Studies. He is an inductee in the Medina County Sports Hall of Fame and was on the 1991 Medina County All-Star Football Team. Mark grew up as an Army brat and is a proud son and grandson of veterans from World War II, Korean War, and the Vietnam War. Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
For the viewers at home, can you start by describing what the role of the county commissioner is?
Yes, the role of county commissioner is a governing function that looks over budgets from the various departments within the county, approves projects on a daily basis, smaller projects, smaller funding allocations, but also larger projects in the county. Responsible for the entire county, to look over, to make sure that all departments are functioning efficiently as possible, also addressing concerns on a county-wide basis for issues that are affecting the county itself. And to work with other local governments within the county on joint efforts to keep this county and its communities moving forward.
And have to all work together.
Exactly.
Very good. If you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us a bit about why you were running.
Yes, I'm Mark Colzar. It's been, this is my second time running for a county commissioner. I ran in 2012. I've been a county resident for a large portion of my life. Grew up an Army brat, so the civic duty is intertwined within me. And I'm running for a county commissioner because I love this county, and I think it's time for some better leadership, if you will, that we've had in the past. And, you know, I'm a registered Democrat, but to me, I'm more nonpartisan than anything. I don't let the politics get involved. But, you know, we have some big issues facing the county, and to be honest with you, a little frustrated on the way some of these issues have been handled. I have an experience as being an elected official for 12 years here in the city of Medina. I have a track record, and that I want to bring to the county level, because I think I can make a positive impact on this county in recent, in now and in the future.
Get the job done.
Right, exactly.
Very good. What's the biggest cost area for the county budget, and how would you propose to address it?
Well, I think really the cost issue in department-wise, you have your various courts and the sheriff's department, all of those are the bigger ticket items on the budget side. You have pass-throughs with other entities, such as the county home and things of that nature. But the way I've handled myself on the local level as a city councilman, I look at each department, see how they're functioning, see if there's areas where we can, you know, tighten the belt. I know the county is struggling financially and concerned with future revenues and future budgets, which I understand. The city of Medina, we have similar concerns. So when you look at those budgets and you look at past history and plan into the future, make sure we're doing everything as efficiently as possible, so we don't have to go back to the taxpayers for additional money, and work within our means. And I think with those departments and other large issues that are facing the county, you know, you try to be as frugal and as fiscally responsible as possible.
Sure.
But also deliver for your constituents as well.
Make sure the services are there, sure. What are your views on government procurement, and where do you believe that can be improved? Are there regional solutions that can help reduce expenses?
Oh, I think so. I mean, just at the local level, here in the city, I keep saying local, but county's local well, or as well, but here in the city, we try to do efficiencies with the Medina City Schools, or with the Buckeye School District, or even other entities when we can, whether it's Brunswick sharing equipment and things of that nature. But we have to have a unified front, and pooling together government entities using tax dollars from different regions, when you pull them together, I think you run a little more efficiently.
Sure.
Right now, we have a call center in the city of Medina for our police department. Well, the sheriff has a call center also within the city of Medina. There's discussions there that possibly someday merging that, and I would be in support of similar things of that nature, where we're merging two departments that are essentially covering the same area, the 911 calls and things of that nature. But you got to look at that, and you got to make sure it works, and sometimes problems you run into is you have too many chiefs in the room, and nobody wants to lose their power.
Literally.
Right, and I think I could be a great mediator to work with different elected officials or individuals to make those type of agreements happen, because I think it's key.
Right.
And I think we have room to improve and things of that nature.
And get more efficient. Very good. What are your thoughts on the recent discussions surrounding the waste and recycling process in the county?
That is a very good question. I've been, as you said in the beginning, I'm health and safety chairman, sanitation chairman, but, you know, I'm, that's one of the topics I'm frustrated with. I'm frustrated with that we have a $20 million facility out there that I don't think was fully utilized. I am embarrassed, too, to, as a councilman, to tell constituents back then that, you know, "Don't worry about your trash, everything's recycled," and people love that. New people coming in our communities love that. Well, when the truth came out, the numbers that we were actually recycling were, you know, around, we'll give them 10%, or sometimes lower, which it was disheartening. It was frustrating. And I know communities got together to discuss, we had the MCE18 Board that discussed the trash, but I'd hate to turn our back on that facility. I mean, a lot of taxpayer money has been put towards that. I'm hoping that we can do something better than, you know, we waited two years and we get dumpsters around the communities that I use. My wife and I, we separate, we go and take it there. But we got to be, I think, a little more user-friendly for the constituents, and to me, that's at the curb. So if we can do some separation at the curb, you know, I don't want to go out and buy millions and millions, or require these communities to go out and buy millions and millions of new equipment.
Right.
Let's see what we can utilize with what we have. It's not rocket science, but I think, I know there's still discussions, but one thing I want to address is right now, the three commissioners make the final say on what happens to the recycling in our community. And one thing I will press for is to expand that committee, so it's not just the three commissioners. So instead of a three-member board, go to seven. The two commissioners, two from the municipalities, one from, or I'm sorry, two commissioners, three from each municipality, one from a village, and one from a township.
Okay.
It spreads it out a little bit, because just the city of Medina and Wadsworth, I believe we generate almost half of that trash. So we...
To let more voices be heard.
Exactly. Give them more opportunity to vote, and, because everybody's impacted there. But, yeah, we have a long way to go, but it's happening all over this country and around the world. I know there's commodities involved and pricing of that, but, you know, we need a recycling system in this county that we don't look like we're back in the Stone Age and we're up with other communities, even in our northeast Ohio.
And we can be proud of, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, definitely. Very good. Is there anything else you would like the viewers to know?
There's plenty, and can I hit it all? I don't know. I've been a councilman since 2004. I've taken my job seriously, and I take every job that I'm elected to seriously. There's a lot that can be said about this county, our great quality of life. As a city councilman, I strive to represent my constituents and businesses to the best of my ability, and I will carry that forward at the county level. I carry my heart and my thoughts on my shoulder, so I will tell you how I feel, I will give you the honest opinion. I take these big decisions, I don't take them lightly. They're thorough thoughts that I come up with to, when I make my votes. Now, because, you know, some of these votes you make are going to last for generations. My, I ask to the residents, especially in this audience, that have seen, if you watch council meetings, or we watch our committee meetings, I have 12 years of history. Hopefully, you've taken the time to watch, to see how I function as an elected official. I have a track record that is easily researched. I urge you to go to the internet, your newspaper, to find out, read articles, look how I handle situations. I mean, we have a lot of issues facing this county, whether it's the recycling, whether it's the Nexus Pipeline, whether it's... whether it's the Nexus Pipeline, whether it's, uh, the heroin addiction that we have in this county. Uh, the quality of life that I want to maintain. Um, I don't want to be built out like, uh, Kyle County. I want to have a balance within this county from farmland to industry. And provide that balance, provide that quality of life that we all live or moved here for. And I don't want to lose that. So as, uh, the next county commissioner, um, I will be full go. I will represent this county in a proper manner and, uh, work with other elected officials to, uh, keep this county as, as remarkable as it is, as it is. And, uh, making sure this quality of life is here for generations to come.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time this morning.
Alright, thank you.
Very good. Appreciate it. Well, I'd like to introduce William Hudson. Uh, Bill has had a, a varied professional career. He and his family moved to Medina County twenty-three years ago while working for Westfield Insurance Company. He worked at Westfield for thirty-one years in roles ranging from legal positions to executive officer. For the past four years, he has de- he has developed a thriving legal practice in Medina. Bill has also been the law director for the Village of Westfield Center for nineteen years. In that role, he has worked in a variety of issues involving contracts, records, open meetings, zoning, and a host of other governmental issues. In two thousand and nine, he was elected to the Cloverfield, Cloverleaf Board of Education. He was board president and successfully led the board through difficult budgetary times. He has served on the Medina County Port Authority Board since two thousand and five and helps lead economic development efforts through the county. He is also a member of the Medina County Economic Development Corporation. He has served on the boards of numerous nonprofit organizations throughout the county. Bill and his wife Laura have two grown children and two grandchildren. His oldest son is a West Point graduate and is stationed at Wright Patterson Air Force Base. His youngest is a student at the University of Richmond Law School. Uh, so Bill, I'd like to welcome you.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Pleasure to be here.
Uh, let's get to know a little bit about you and, uh, the position that you're running for, which is county commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Uh, why don't we start by, especially for our viewers at home, talk a little bit about what the role of the county commissioner is?
Uh, the, there are three county commissioners, and they are essentially the, uh, executive officers for the county. They manage the budget of the county. They set the policy for the county, um, and determine what initiatives the, the county and the departments will pursue.
Okay, so it's a board of, of a group of three?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Uh, well, we talked about your bio a little bit, but let's get to know you a little bit better, uh, your background and then specifically why you're running for this position.
Mm-hmm. Um, I, I have, from an educational standpoint, uh, went to First State University in Michigan and then, uh, Capital University Law School in Columbus. Uh, we have lived in Ohio for about thirty-five years. And lived in Columbus, uh, immediately prior to, uh, coming to Medina County. Um, when we moved here, uh, we, we looked at several different counties, uh, around the area, uh, for a place to live. And we chose Medina County because of the people in Medina County, because of the amenities and all the things that Medina County had to offer. Um, and, and Medina County really has a very reasonable tax base when you compare it to surrounding counties. So, uh, we were taken by the people, uh, by the park systems, the water systems, and, and by the trash collection efforts and recycling that went on in the county. And, um, we felt that was the best place to raise our family, and we've been very happy here.
Okay, I can relate with what you're saying about Medina County. I moved here from out of state as well. And on the first visit here, my family and I were just impressed with Medina County. And I've lived here sixteen years since and been very happy with the decision. Uh, what about, and then what made you want to run for this particular position, though?
Um, my goal as a county commissioner is to make sure that Medina County stays that way. It, it, it stays as an attractive place to both live, uh, and work. Um, one of the things, the statistics that I've heard is that up to fifty-five to seventy percent of the workforce in Medina County, lives in Medina County, goes outside the county, uh, to find employment.
Ah.
Um, I, I think we need to stimulate, uh, economic development efforts to, to create more jobs inside Medina.
Keep them here, yes.
And keep them here. It's a quality of life issue.
Right.
You know, people are spending forty-five minutes or an hour each way to work. It's not good for the environment, and, and we should have more employment, more businesses in Medina County.
Uh, okay. Uh, what is the biggest cost area for the county budget? And then how do you propose to manage that?
Um, the, the largest cost area is actually social services. A lot of that, uh, is, um, uh, federal and, and, and state money, uh, that comes in. Um, uh, aside from that, there's, uh, the Sanitary Engineers Office. There, there are various departments that, um, e- essentially, the budget for the county is about thirty-seven million dollars.
Okay.
And, and we need to make sure that that money is utilized appropriately. It's allocated, uh, correctly amongst the various departments of the county. Um, and that they are using the funds to provide services to, uh, the residents of Medina County.
Okay. And while we're on the topic of the budget and, and spending and money, uh, what are your views on government procurement? And, and where do you believe that we can improve on that? Uh, and are there re- regional solutions that can help reduce expenses at the county level?
Um, governmental entities are required to bid out contracts, anything over fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And, and so the bidding process is, is very fundamental to, uh, making sure that the county gets the best, uh, the best bids and, and best bang for its, its dollars, so to speak. Uh, the Department of Administrative Services from the state of Ohio has purchasing programs. Um, I believe the county is involved in those. And so the degree to which we can leverage those for, uh, cruisers for the, uh, sheriff's department or, or other supplies and things that the, the county needs to operate, uh, we should.
Okay. Uh, let's talk about recycling for a minute. There's been different discussions as to the best way to manage the waste streams and, uh, whether to recycle in a central location and so forth. But what are your thoughts on recycling programs here in the county?
Um, we, we need to balance several things. Uh, first off, we need to have our trash collected. I mean, fundamentally, that is an essential function that we need to have handled. Uh, we need to do a reasonable cost. Uh, the tipping fees, uh, back when they were sixty-five dollars were, were too high.
Right.
And, and various governmental entities within the county collect their garbage and transition it in different ways. Um, and, and at different costs. Some cities absorb the cost, some cities pass it on to their, their customers.
Right.
Um, and so we need to be sensitive to, to their budgetary constraints. And, um, and then, thirdly, we need to maximize recycling. Uh, and, and we, we need to balance all of that. We need to balance the risk, uh, involved in whatever solution is implemented, uh, and make sure that, A, we're doing it cost-effectively. We're getting the, again, the biggest bang for a dollar in terms of recycling. Um, and, and also that we're not assuming as a county too much risk in, in the process.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to see us have a single stream, uh, method for those folks that, that desire that. Uh, quite honestly, when we moved here, uh, that was an attractive option to us. Our assumption was, and what we, what we were told was that everything that we put out at the street got recycled. And a hundred percent of it got recycled.
Uh, and that's what we, we understood too originally, yeah.
Yeah, through this process of, of, uh, the rewrite of the plan, the, uh, the Solid Waste Plan, uh, it, it's come to light that, that a much smaller percentage, something in the neighborhood of fifteen to seventeen percent
Was all that really got recycled, yeah.
And, uh, and that was disappointing, uh, both to me, but to, to many of the folks that I talked to throughout the county because everybody was under the impression that a hundred percent
Was getting sorted, yeah.
Was getting recycled. Um, there are various solutions out there. You know, we have the, the drop-off bins now. Uh, those, I think, are generating, uh, three or four percent, uh, in terms of recycling. It's, it's expanding and it's growing, uh, but I don't know that that single solution is going to be a solution that's going to apply for everyone
For the long term, yeah.
Across the county. So, um, I would like to see the, the MCA teamwork group, who is the actual group that's working on the, uh, the rewrite of the plan, to explore a variety of different options, uh, to, to, uh, assess the cost of those various options. And then what we expect to have in terms of recycling, uh, from each one of those options. And then it might be a solution where we implement, uh, options two, four, and five, or, or some combination of them.
Like, be like a menu of, of solutions?
Yes, to, to, to get us at an optimal point where we're, we're balancing the cost, the, the actual benefit of the recycling, uh, and the risk associated with it.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we talked about recycling. Is there anything else that we didn't talk about during the interview that you wanted, uh, would like viewers to know about yourself? Anything that we didn't cover that, uh, in terms of you running?
Um, I think Medina County is a wonderful place to live. Uh, we, we need to, to manage development, uh, both from a commercial standpoint as well as a residential standpoint. Uh, and, and make sure that it's controlled, make sure that it happens in the way that the, that is beneficial to the county. Uh, but we need to promote it, uh, both from a tax base standpoint, uh, a- as well as an employment standpoint.
Okay. Well, Bill Hudson, on behalf of the Greater Medina Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you for coming out today and, and talking to our viewers about, uh, yourself and, and the position that you're running for. And best of luck.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it.
I thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.